Stand for the flag. Hi.
Good evening. To the flag of the United States of America and to God from which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We will start with public input one. And I have a little something to read for public input. Would anybody like to come for public input? Come on up. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Yeah, come on up. And direct comments to the board president. And understand that the board will listen but may not necessarily respond or discuss the items. Please do not discuss personnel or individual students. Note that you are being recorded and please take your time. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Janice Arbia. I have two students in the school right now. And when we made the time change, there was all of these, you know, what's going to happen, what's going to happen? And it was, well, let's see what's going to happen. Hopefully, it'll work. Some of the kids like sleeping in, some of them don't. Something changed, some hasn't changed. So, being a parent, I'm just putting out there to the board what my experience has been and what my questions for the school is and are. Personally, I have a student who has missed probably about four or five of her full ninth period class. And she also is on a team that would, some of those students would be getting taken out of AP Stats and AP Calculus for the whole entire period. She has also recently just missed a portion of eighth period because she needed to prepare to get on the bus at 1:30. Moving forward, because I see volleyball gets out late, I have a daughter that will be playing basketball. So, she's not going to get her academic support for away games at minimum. She's going to be missing AP Stats as her last ninth period, which is huge, very huge. I know she's not the only student who will be missing that ninth period. So, I'm just wondering academically, because that comes first, I would like to know what the school's plan is to help these children that are missing this class. My daughter's first missed class was a quiz that she missed. Luckily, the teacher was nice enough to work together and have her make it up. I'd like to know who the onus is on for the kids making it up. Is it going to fall on the teachers, which is going to be difficult because they already give so much of their free time up? So, it's kind of not fair for them to say, hey, we need you for another period to make up because we're starting school 15 minutes later and these kids are taking out and missing so much time. I feel very strongly, and I'm pretty sure I'm not the only one in the community, that moving forward for the next school year, that we turn the clock back. Seeing kids are late to school, seeing the same kids running down to catch that bus as I'm going through my own route. So, I think it was a great idea. We did some research and everything. Maybe it can work. Honestly, this is the first marking period, and personally, as a parent, I can tell, I see it's not working. I see academic problems for our kids. So, moving forward, we can't change things now. I'm asking that we reflect upon this, see what, you'll gather information from your administrators are great, and see what's going on. But I would also really like to know where my kid's going to get that extra help that she needs.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Anybody else for public input one?
Sandy Cruel. I have a couple of questions. There's a couple of new appointments tonight that were not in the budget, but they will be going forward in the budget for next year. Is that correct? I see a computer laboratory assistant. I don't recall that from the last budget season, the edema. Maybe it could be. And then, of course, we're appointing a school crew leader and not a buildings and grounds administrator. And neither of those, I just want to clarify that they were or they were not in the budget.
The computer lab appointment, that's actually taking someone from a provisional position to a permanent position, but that person's been with us since 2015. So, that's always been in the budget.
So, to appoint as a permanent, so instead of being a temporary for three, two years, they're going to go.
It was no list. It was a competitive.
Okay, understood. Got it.
So, now there's a list.
Understood, okay.
They're getting permanent.
Okay, and then on the change orders, is this on the building project that we have not completed yet? Is that still on this one, on the two, the two change orders?
We're still getting in change orders that had, that actually had to do with the auditorium, all the work that was done in the auditorium. That's what those change orders were for.
Okay, and I guess I thought that it was going to be closed last Christmas. So, does this close out that building project since we're starting another one?
We're getting closeout documents now. Some of the contractors are sending us all of their closeout documents. We have received closeout documents from two of the contractors. So, they are coming in, but it is going to take a little, a little more time to close it out completely. It was a huge project.
Right, so, okay, so, okay, so almost, it'll probably be a year since we thought. Okay. And then, I see that the other stump was removed. I never did get a reply back as to why one stump was done and the other one wasn't. I see they were both done. And then, my last question, I hope during the athletic update, is on the soccer field because I was there for homecoming, and there was some serious issues with drainage out there. So, I hope to get an update during the athletic report on that.
Let me go ahead and, the stump, we scheduled the stump to be removed on a day that it turned out we had a Saturday event, and there were just far too many children and parents. So, we rescheduled the time for the stump to be removed because we thought it would be inappropriate to have the stump removed when there were children and parents around, which they were very good about doing other work for the district. And we have been finding we were over, we've been overwatering the turf with the grass. That was the wrong thing to call it. It's not turf, it's grass. And we have, we've been simply overwatering. We have to scale back on how much we're watering it because we really need the roots to grow now because it's really substantially, much more advanced than it, than the scale they've been appointing us on.
Okay.
So, it's in good shape. So, we need to stop watering it now.
Okay, so, just to get, so we scheduled somebody to come in to do the stumps on day that we had people here. So, we brought them back, and then we're overwatering the field. I was here after a huge torrential rainstorm. So, I don't know which that was, but.
And we've been watering it too, which is.
And the kids that weren't allowed to be on it after rain will now be allowed on it during lunch after the rains.
Children will very often be told they can't play on it if we, there's going to be parts of that field, especially the goals, where children are not going to be able to play on it.
Oh, that I understand, yeah.
Because we have to make it a priority to keep that field at, at playing level. So, we'll give children some parts of the field to play on, but there'll be times that we're going to have to say no to being on parts of the field.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else for public input? Okay. At this time, we will move into the auditor's report. We will do school board recognition after the auditor's report.
And before I get started, I have something I want to share. The amount of work that goes into our business office interfacing with our external auditors is nothing short of writing a novel. And just every day coming in and that kind of exchange of information and how well it gets exchanged back and forth is extraordinary. And the level of civility that happens. And I want to reflect back to five or six years ago, before we did the amount of policy work that we've done and the amount of work that we've done working with our cabinet members. We were getting written up for between 25, 26, 29 items that the board was having to manage through. I love when they call them Hogwarts screamers, that if anybody's ever read Harry Potter. And we're down to only two items that were being addressed this year. So, I want to say thank you so much for the hard work you've done in sort of scolding us along the way. And I hope that we have been good students in learning how to re-manage and.
Yes, no, I do also want to commend the district for coming a long way. I remember when I first started here, I mean, you had no reserves. You were at 2% if that. And you definitely took my recommendation seriously, which I like to say. But, you know, you know, I'm trying, I'm here to help you and guide you and not criticize what you're doing. So, we have to work as a team and, you know, just give you, right, give you guidelines to follow. So, I'm happy that you did take my advice and take, do that documented plan as you see that you didn't get written up to the OSC because you have, in the financial area, because you did put those plans into place.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I did meet with the audit committee to discuss in full detail the financial statements and the communication letters. There's basically, what I like to say is two sets of financial statements. There's your fund level, which is your modified accrual basis of accounting, and then we converted them into GASB 34 financial statements, which is an accrual basis of accounting. What that means is we basically put on your long-term assets and your long-term liabilities on the district-wide financials. We discussed the net pension asset for GASB 68. That was implemented three years ago. It's always been a net pension asset because the TRS system itself is fully funded. They changed their assumptions this year for 2017, therefore reflecting in a net pension liability, no longer a net pension asset. So, for the ER system, it's always been a net pension liability, and they continue to have a net pension liability. We also discussed that the OPED liability, that's your other retirees' health insurance costs. The district themselves hires their own actuary to come up with that analysis. And come next year, the district will implement GASB statement number 75, which is going to put that entire liability onto the district-wide financial statements. Right now, we've just been amortizing that total liability over 30 years. Some of the, those are the government-wide, some of the highlights for the fund level financial statements, which we were just discussing. I'm happy to see that the district is funding their reserves, they're utilizing their reserves, they're appropriating their reserves into their, incorporating it into their budget, which is basically what we'd like to see, is that the district's, you know, maintaining that. Also, that the district did come up with a long-term plan and that they've been sticking to it, and also redefining it each year as they go through to see what the needs are of the district. Year to year, it could change, and I'm glad to see that they do revisit that and change it as they go forward. The district's at the 4%, which is 4% of next year's budget. That's the maximum allowed that you're allowed to have by state law, and the district's at the 4% level. We did issue an unmodified opinion, and in auditor's language, that means it's a clean opinion. It's the best opinion that the district can have. We had no material weaknesses, which is a very good thing. And we did have two recommendations, just improved districts' internal controls, but like I said, it was just minor in nature, just to help them along in the process. Otherwise, I just wanted to thank Jen, Christine, and the entire business office. They were very helpful getting us all the documentation. I know I was on numerous conversations with Jen, trying to get these wrapped up, these financial statements, so I'm glad that we were able to meet the deadline in a timely fashion.
And I think the, there was a law change with us having to now post the full report. We post the management letter now online, right? We're now posting effective action plans. Everything is going to be able to, you'll be able to find everything online, so.
Any questions?
Any questions for the auditor? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Could I ask Ms. Carrero and Mr. Malone, would you like, and Mr. Nichols, would you like to come up and do the presentation to the board? Do you want, is that the clicker to the cue button?
I have the clicker, yes. Who needs it?
You can actually jump right to it. So, this week, I know that you come here for the pay and for the glamour, Board of Education. But this is actually Board of Education Recognition Week, and our administrative leadership is going to share with you some of the ways we've been recommended this, recognized this week.
To the members of our Board of Education, just on behalf of everyone at the elementary school, thank you for all that you do, all the time you put in, and all the care that you give to our school district. I have some thoughtfully written letters from the students of the elementary school along with a poster that was put together by our pre-K, just their, their way of saying thank you. So, I'll pass those around.
Is that their pictures in there? And the little stars?
Yes, yes.
I can't get the cue to this thing.
My daughter was told she had to write one, so.
So, hers says, dear mommy, I miss you.
Why did you do this?
Because I have the whole lace? No, it's fine. It's all black.
I read a couple of, I read a couple of those letters, and the students signed them, yours truly. Very, very nice.
Very sweet.
So, the high school students, Ms. Carrero went down to Ms. Marchesea and Mr. Solo, and the students ended up, with Ms. Carrero's help, framing photographs from Sag Harbor that were meaningful to them. So, that's a token of their appreciation to you for all the hard work that you voluntarily put in. So, these are the seven photographs.
And a lot of them are award-winning. So, you guys can fight over which ones because if I hand them out, it's not the one that you like. I don't want to say you get what you get and you don't get upset.
They are, they are amazing. We were like just wowed over them. Yeah, there's one of, in Chabonius Market, there's another one over the movie theater. There's a number of the beautiful piers around, and there's one of the post office during a snowstorm, which I thought was really something, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Principal's report. Okay, so, I'm going to start off because we will be doing, over the next two educational meetings, we'll be talking about how we're accomplishing our goals. But one of the kind of pushes we made to, to get to reaching our Board of Education goals took place during our superintendent's conference day, which I was very proud of. All of our faculty and staff attended. So, we had everyone there with the exception of our bus driver. So, we had our, our teaching assistants, our secretaries, everyone attended. It was really nice to see, and everyone filled the auditorium. And these were the first three presentations we had that morning on October 10th. And the first one was Kim Laubie, who was the executive director of HUGS. She also is the lead agency for SAFE in Sag Harbor, which is really starting to take off and do a lot of great things in our community. She also brought with her Lynda Ventura, who's the head of Thomas's Hope Center. She lost her son in 2012 to an opioid overdose. He had been a tremendous athlete. He'd been an integral part of his community. And the devastation of losing him, she could have kind of turned her back, but instead, she's taken her grief and put it into action by creating Thomas's Hope Center, where she does advocacy and training for students, for parents, and she's teamed up with Kim, and they present all over Long Island. The next one was Challenges of Equity and Inclusion, which is another present, this was a presentation working towards our goal for the inclusion and our wellness. And then, we also had one on seizures. Let me just give a quick one. So, the opioids and our students, Kim Laubie, that's again to reach our wellness goal. You could have heard a pin drop when they were presenting, and they talked about not only the opioid epidemic, but where its roots are and what are some of the tools that we can use to combat that epidemic moving forward. Then, next, we had, again, this is to all of our faculty and staff, all, every employee that we have here in the district, talked about the challenges of equity inclusion on the east end of Long Island. And this was done by Minerva Perez, who's the executive director of the organization for Latino and Americans, OLA. And then, she also brought a student who's an engineering student at Stony Brook, who also talked about his experiences coming through and the struggles of trying to get to college. We also finished our morning for the staff with a presentation from Ethic, which is a program that works just doing community outreach for those who have seizures. And there's a number of different seizures that you can have, along with grandma. There's a smaller type of seizure that can make this person seem like they're not being cooperative, when actually, it is a smaller type of seizure. And we do have children and adults in our community and in our school that have seizures. And it was very helpful because they actually gave what you could do to identify a seizure, but also how you could help and what would be like step-by-step things that you could do. And it was a wonderful training, and it was interesting because they had, the presenter have the folks in the audience put their hands up of somebody they knew that had seizures, and almost every single hand went up, and they gave really good practical advice. So, again, this is all moving towards our wellness goals. Moving forward, just some, you know, added pieces that we brought out to the community was we had the premiere of Reversing the Stigma. Again, this is in cooperation with SAFE, which we're a part of, we're one of the 12 sectors, and HUGS, which gave a documentary. We had it at Bay Street Theater because we had never seen it, so I couldn't bring it here to school because I wanted to see it first. But we had a tremendous, tremendous number of members of the community that are really thoughtful about this heroin epidemic and this opioid epidemic. And they talked about the stigma of people seeking help when they become addicted to alcohol or to other drugs. And this documentary worked hard at trying to reverse that stigma, so people do seek help because they can survive and recovery. Just a moment, yep, sure.
Can I ask a question about, I don't know if we're covering it later, so I figured that this might be the time to ask. I know that we have a lot of activity around Red Ribbon Week, and a letter recently went home to parents that reference the opioid. So, it would be good, I think, to communicate, because Red Ribbon Week is for the middle schoolers, right?
Yeah, and we're going to be covering that thoroughly in the presentation today.
Okay, thanks.
One last thing I wanted to add is we also, I love the idea that we have volunteers being noted. So, just as a small note on, from a superintendent's point of view, volunteering is an alternate high, and they talk a lot about alternate highs because it's a, it's a risk-taking. So, I personally purchased volunteer t-shirts for our students to wear when they're out in the community because I don't think we realize it's not just our IB students. All of our students volunteer out in the community. So, we have these new volunteer t-shirts for our students to be wearing, and they get to keep them. That's why I purchased them, but I'm really happy if the Booster Club or the PTSA want to keep purchasing more. Also, this is more about that reversing, we had, Safe in Sag Harbor was also present and was talking about how more community members can get involved. This is Kim Laubie at that, also presenting at the, at the Reversing the Stigma. And this was, this was a pretty big deal that we had the Reversing the Stigma presented at Bay Street because Robert Kent, who is the State of New York's Office of Alcohol and Substance Abuse, their director came all the way down from Albany to talk about the funding and the addiction, and he, boy, he had some spirited conversation in the, in the community, but he handled it very well. Last thing I want to talk about is, again, working towards our wellness goals, and we'll do more presentation, but we've started purchasing, we've gotten a better refrigerator downstairs that can hold more locally purchased fresh vegetables, which we didn't, we didn't have before. So, we're purchasing from local growers, local farms, and these are some of the things that, that's a squash medley that was boiled, and the students really enjoyed it, along with tossed salads. They have these little, don't make that noise. They have little brancos. She was, she was making life. Tossed salads. They also have lutherella and tomato and arugula salads. They're making their own hummus, which you can get in a sandwich, or you can also take with you along with hard-boiled eggs. And here's more of the local produce that they make, make into these beautiful salads every day. And the students, every one of our sixth graders is purchasing the whole bunch. It's kind of awesome. So, then, I will hand this off to Mr. Nichols and Ms. Carrero on the superintendent's conference day. I talk pretty fast.
Katie, that last slide of pictures, those really came from our cafeteria?
Those are all from our cafeteria, yeah.
So, when we got those in our email, honestly, I had to look twice because I thought maybe they were promotional photos, but it's amazing how good that looks.
No, I have to tell you, I fired my husband, but he was a, he was a four-star chef, and so he was down there every day, and he's like, you've got to come down and take a picture of this.
We got a refrigerator dedicated just for produce. Because what happened was, we were storing our produce in our refrigerator, and we weren't really keeping, the temperature would be too high or too low for produce. So, now that we have one refrigerator dedicated just for produce, we can keep it at the, you know, the appropriate temperature, and it has a much longer shelf life, and we're able to go ahead and use a lot of growers and farms from the community now.
That's such great news.
The, the little cups, though, that make, that are just vegetables, the kids, and the ones that have like the hard-boiled eggs in, the kids just purchase those to taste with them at the end of the, you know, to have with them for the, you know, before they go to sports practice, that kind of thing.
Yeah. That's fantastic. Now, I guess the next project will be finding containers that aren't plastic.
I, I, I feel a sense of guilt.
You know, please, next.
Hang on, Gina has got a question.
I just had a quick question on the, on the opioid talk. You said they had offered up some tools, like, do you have any specific tools?
Well, there's preventative factors, and we're going to have a presentation at the next board meeting, but they talked a lot about the fact that people don't go directly to opioids. And if you can postpone children using alcohol and marijuana for as late as possible, so that was one of the things, like postpone, postpone, postpone. Know where your children are going to be. Use like the things that we're going to be doing during Red Ribbon Week, like mindfulness is really important. And then, having alternative things for children to do that give them a natural high. So, we actually have presenter, I'm giving a lot of your good stuff away ahead of time, is having alternate highs for children. So, that's, that, that they, like, putting them up on stage, having them play musical instruments, having them, you know, do things that give them, you know, and then having them have a connectedness with their peers that doesn't involve alcohol and drugs. So, I gave away all the stuff they're doing for Red Ribbon Week, but, yeah.
So, I'll start with the superintendent's conference day. The superintendent talked a little bit about it. In the afternoon, we broke out by building, and so we had two areas that we focused on. The first was Theory of Knowledge across subjects, and Mike Guinan along with Sean Kelly, one of the Theory of Knowledge teachers, led that session. And it's very important that we focus on the acquisition of knowledge and the thought processes that students go through because it's going to be assessed pretty rigorously when the IB comes for their five-year assessment of our program, which is coming up very quickly. So, we've done some sessions already in faculty meetings. We did it last year, and this year was, this meeting was our first significant foray into it for the current year. It was capped off by one of our senior diploma candidates giving her internal assessment for the Theory of Knowledge course in front of the whole faculty. And the basic, I guess the focus was the extent to which emotions deal with or interfere with the acquisition of new knowledge. And so, she did a great job addressing that. There's some pictures later on. The second part of the afternoon was dealing with co-teaching models and explored best instructional practices. So, Ms. Carrero and Mr. Guinan led the faculty through multiple activities aimed at improving practice in the classroom.
Jack, pardon me. In terms of co-teaching, does, is that in an environment where you've got a teacher and a TA or other? Or is it about taking two different subjects and co-teaching in an integrated fashion across disciplines?
The former, as it pertained to this.
Okay.
Presentation. And it, it is both TAs and special education teachers.
And ENL now.
Here's a picture of the senior student, Hope Brindle, who is also commended by the National Merit Competition for her score on the PSAT. This is her presenting to her teachers, which I think is probably pretty nerve-wracking, but she did a wonderful job. And the teachers didn't hold off on asking difficult questions, and she answered them very, very well. Another picture, Mr. Guinan facilitating on the left there. Past events, the 20th was a sixth-grade parent town hall meeting. Schools were closed for Rosh Hashanah, curriculum night to 26th, the superintendent's conference day we just touched on. The PSAT was administered to 10th and 11th grade students on the 11th. The 10th grade assessment is really just to get students used to the assessment process. The 11th grade administration, those scores are used by the PSAT to call. The 11th grade administration, those scores are used by the PSAT, the College Board for consideration for a national merit semifinalist status or commended status. We've had two semifinalists in the 22 years I've been here, so very hard to attain that. Homecoming was the 13th and 14th, the PTSA and Mr. Bramhoff really did a wonderful job pulling that off despite some inclement weather on Saturday. And the superintendent did a great job captaining that ship through that morning because there were a lot of different opinions about what to do. And then this past Friday, conversation with, conversation with administrators, that was our, I think, second session this year. This is a picture of the IB Diploma Buddies Program. Sophie Letanzio, who is an IB diploma candidate, part of her creativity action and service or CAS project was to set something up, you've heard about this before, where senior diploma candidates partner with junior diploma candidates in a supportive fashion to help them with the transition. So Babe Burger volunteered to host this free of cost and donated food and this was a successful afternoon. Here are a couple of pictures, that Sophie right there, looks like he's having fun. They all do. This is a class, this is, I think, an IB history class and they're engaged in an activity. There's the article in Newsday that addressed Sophie's work. This is one of our students, it's Jai Zachak Noel.
Jai Noel.
Jai Noel, that's what I thought, named All-State Student Performer this year as a prestigious honor. This is Hope, I mentioned that before, she's a commended student in the 2018 National Merit Scholarship Program. For those of you who don't know, they take those PSAT scores that they earn as juniors and each state has a different qualifying number. So it's safe to say that Hope's qualifying number, if she lived in Arkansas, she would have been a National Merit semifinalist. New York has a little bit of a higher threshold, if you will, one of the highest along with This is the Red Ribbon Week middle school calendar that Ms. Cariero put together. Do you want to speak to that?
I think you guys all have copies of that and it was sent out to everybody, so if you have questions, we can go through everything, but we have two guest speaker, actually, yeah, two guest speakers, Dan Ochio-Grosso, which talks about a natural high, he talks about how his passion for basketball got him to dissuade him from taking drugs and he saw all of his friends not being able to participate in sports. He's very dynamic, he gets all the students involved, it's hand-on activity, we do it in the high school gym, that's for our seventh and eighth graders. This morning, all day in PE classes and it's going to be a four-week endeavor. One of our parents came in, Ms. Hartstein, and she led meditation and yoga practices that the kids now can use outside of the classroom. And then our adventure park trip for our sixth grader, seventh and eighth graders already went on it, our team building and then our dress-up days. And this year we did something different with our door decorating, we're also handing out trivia questions through Google Forms about drug and alcohol awareness and also facts. So we're trying to make it. And then our coming event, which Ms. Denapoli, our middle school guidance counselor is leading, the dodgeball tournament, we're excited to have. We have a lot of applicants, we have some kids that don't have spots yet, but we're trying to figure it out because they want to get involved, so we will just make teams for them.
And you also have an adult night?
Yes, so.
We'll go into that.
We'll go into that, yeah, because there's a slide on it.
Let's mix it up at lunch.
Mix it up at lunch is when the students don't sit with the children that they want to, they sit with their academic supports and they have to complete an activity together for the entire period.
Funny story today, I'm out there greeting cars and today's pajama day. So when, in the beginning, when kids got out, they had this look of panic and they would look at me and they would go, it's pajama day, right? So after like two or three, two or three kids doing it, the fourth one came out and said, it's pajama day, right? What are you talking about?
Is that for the high school too?
Middle school.
Just middle school, right?
Middle school, yeah.
I would be afraid of the high school lingerie.
So Mr. Guinan is set up on Thursday at 7:00 PM. I think Ms. Graves and Ms. Cariero mentioned Matt Belash will be presenting on getting high naturally. He's been, Mr. Guinan did some research on this person and pretty well reviewed, so he's coming in on Thursday and then he'll be presenting to the students on Friday.
Yeah, all grades.
All grades. This was a quick picture of the student council with the mayor to declare Red Ribbon Week. This was the Red Ribbon Week kickoff and that's Ms. Denapoli speaking to the middle school students in the auditorium. Some work in the village, this is mindfulness in PE class. Do you want to speak to this, Ms. Cariero, or you want me to just go over?
Let's keep going.
So this is the, the update on the Pearson Avenue School HUGS collaboration. That's just a quick overview of what it is proposed to look like in terms of the hours of operation and the days of the week. Basically, we're going to be taking the cafeteria and transforming that into a lounge-like atmosphere. HUGS will be running the program. I think you've probably received some information on this already, but this is, this is what it's going to look like.
When does it start?
As soon as we're able to.
So once it's approved tonight, I talked to Kim Laubie on the phone today on the way home, she stated that she needs 30 days grace period because she just lost her business finance person as well.
So the end of November or in December?
Should we have questions now?
If you have questions on HUGS, yeah.
Once it's up and running, it'll stay up and running, but here's my question, do we anticipate, I do, that the staff members will change annually?
I would hope not, but possibly so depending on how it's implemented.
So it could get up and running November-ish after Thanksgiving and then perhaps we would need to jump-start it in August for the following September so it's ready to go?
We're doing a two-year contract, so it'll be running for two years.
I'm just, I don't want to take more time, but I'm anticipating that the staff, Kim's staff members are going to be younger and maybe leave for other colleges. So I just, I would warn that that might go up and down, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Our goal would be that she would hit, that she would hit the ground running again in September.
In September.
Yeah, yeah.
Are there two, there's two people there every day or one person?
No, two people every day.
Two people. And they'll have a, they'll have a backup or substitute so that we all close our doors?
Yes, and if they are not in, they'll let us know right away.
And is there like an official registration for the students?
That's what we're figuring out with Kim, that's why I called her today to talk about it. She was very overwhelmed with other stuff that was going on, so we're going to have another setup call this week.
She has a, she has a program in West Hampton Beach, so we're just going to mirror it.
This is just a quick breakdown of the anticipated costs.
What was added was a 10% administrancy.
I think I asked this at the last meeting, but the staff members, I mean, who are they and what are their qualifications?
She vets them through her, she also asks us for recommendations as well because she wants somebody locally and involved in the community as well.
So like right now, HUGS pushes into our, provides a person to push into our grade six through 12 classes to provide.
So we already have one contract with HUGS?
Yes. Yeah. And that person provides evidence-based substance abuse education, grade six through 12, they're redesigning the 12th grade curricula this year because the feedback was that it was too elementary in nature.
And how often is a push-in?
It's dependent on the grades. So sixth grade does, I think, 10 different sessions and then, and seventh grade does it within their health class that they take, so that's every other day. So it's just dependent on each grade.
So there's somebody in the health classroom, HUGS?
No, she, our health teacher does it through, because she already was teaching it.
But at different grade levels where health is not offered, which is every grade other than seventh and 10th, this person will push into different classes and I don't have the schedule in front of me, roughly five to 10 times a year and provide substance abuse evidence-based education.
So is that, is that program going to be different based on grade? Is that how it works?
Yes, yeah, this is a sort of, if you're talking about the drug education program, yeah, it's sort of draws on the work of Bartman, which you guys have heard about it, or some of you have heard about in the past because we had a presentation on it. So it's, it's based on that.
So is the past program then going to have like hub-specific elements to it?
She just said it's strictly just an after-school program. That's what they do at West Hampton.
And I'd anticipate, I mean, there are some people who, community members who have asked me repeatedly about the possibility of getting involved with it, working in it. So I will forward some names, as will Ms. Cariero, to Ms. Laubie to interview into that.
Yeah, no, I guess I'm just, I don't understand. It's not, you know, drug preventative designed, why are we using HUGS? It's just, they have the program all set up.
They also, this is something else they do. So they also do retreats to Shelter Island, they're, they're a multifaceted organization. They, they want to get close to children, you know, they want to work with children because they're a change agent, so that's part of their initiative. So if you think about it, children being out on their own after school is probably not a great idea. You want to keep them close, you want to keep them centered, you want to keep them busy during those formative middle school years and keep them, yeah, supervised, active, engaged, you know, gives you an opportunity and then that creates, then they form relationships and then they encourage them to go to like the retreats at Shelter Island so that they start developing those pure mentoring skills, which is what they do at the Shelter Islands. So this gives them another opportunity to create those good relationships and work on their things like decision-making skills, you know, that kind of thing, positive behaviors.
So, I don't know if it's later or not, the question I have regarding substance abuse education, should I ask it now or later? I teed it up earlier. In the high school, I know that a letter went out to parents the past week or so about vaping.
Yes.
And in the letter, it did talk about, did mention that it will be addressed with Red Ribbon Week, but that's middle school, not high school. So in terms of that issue, how is it being, is it through the equation five times or six times a year? Part of that is going to be about vaping and why it's really unhealthy even though kids think it's not unhealthy?
Yeah, I, well, yes. I mean, I think that the, the big, I think the letter spoke to it, but the big picture with a lot of kids is they think that they're not doing anything unhealthy, but they're getting addicted to nicotine.
Right.
So that's the unhealthy element of it.
Those things are also loaded with chemicals, that was sort of mentioned, but they're not always vaping nicotine either.
Right.
Right, it's chemicals and flavorings and what have you.
So this is why, this is, this is much more prevalent than it was two years ago.
Yes.
And, you know, I attended an athletic event in a neighboring school, I was quoted in the newspaper and there were six or seven kids vaping right around me.
Oh, yeah.
None of the adults thought that anything was wrong with it. And it's very hard to decipher what is actually being baked.
Right. Because it doesn't give an odor off like some other mechanisms are doing.
Yes.
I have questions, I just want to build off on what January was raising. I have same questions I have about sort of who the folks would be staffing the after-school program, and I guess one of my concerns is the rate that they would be paid, I mean, that's even less than the bus drivers and considering how many kids one might be overseeing, I just feels of concern to me. Another would be how would we start sooner, you know, so if it gets approved tonight, like it seems like that's a long time to wait till, you know, I know that's not anybody's fault here, but how, what can we do about that? And then the only other thing is going back to the slide the way it was, and I think this came up at the last meeting, was just clarifying that if they are, because I think with the old program, kids would just stop in, kind of a quick hangout, get a snack and then go to a club or the play or what have you. And so whether that can be clarified, that they can do that, unless we're not going to allow that, but it would be nice if they could do that and then.
I think the wording on it is very strict and it's flexible, it's if they're going to a club, yes, they're able to go, but once they leave and if they're not vetted to go to a club, they need to leave the building.
Right, but I think if the language can clarify that, that would be helpful.
The language can clarify that.
So they're going to a school sanction thing such as a club and it's fine.
They're able to be in the building, but once otherwise, they need to leave just for school safety purposes of students wandering the hallways.
Any other questions while I tend to the technology?
We did say that, we said that if somebody, like if you didn't, 2:50 on the bell rings and your partner play is not rehearsing until 3:40, that you just go.
Right, I recall that conversation, but that wasn't reflected in the, in the slide that was up and that's why I raised it again, to say, let's clarify and make sure that that goes out to needed.
I'll make sure that's not there.
The longer version, yeah.
So the Philadelphia trip, so over the years, we've had different iterations of the seventh grade trip, they used to go to Boston and then that changed, then they went to New York City, day trip. So the proposal this year is for them to go to Philadelphia, it's tied into the seventh grade social praise curriculum. The advisor is proposing an overnight field trip to Gettysburg in Philly, followed by a visit to the University of Pennsylvania where one of the seventh grade teachers graduated from. He thought that might be a nice introduction to getting kids familiar with and perhaps interested in aspiring to go to a very good school of higher education. So they're scheduled to return on May 9th and return on the 11th. Any questions?
How much is the cost of a trip for students?
I don't know that yet.
Okay. Because I know that, I think it's on, we have the estimate.
The estimate's in there, but it did say the funding was still unclear, the funding was based as, the cost was based as fundraising.
Right. I was just asking because I just want to understand for the child and family, it may be very reasonable, we've just over the years had some school trips that have been quite expensive and prohibitive to many children. So I didn't notice per, per child cost, so maybe I missed it in the, in the backup.
The per child cost is here, we just, number 19, it has it on the agenda.
No, I know, we got backup paperwork on it and I didn't see it on the average funding agenda.
It's on the resolution.
If you're in seventh grade, what year are you graduating?
Twenty, oh, please. Twenty twenty-one was last year, twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three?
Yes.
I'm looking at.
The cost says TV.
Right, but yeah, but on the agenda, Terry just pointed out, it's here, 550, cost per student is approximately 550. So what do we do, how does the school handle it with students who come from families where that would be a problem?
We usually go to student government and student government will donate the funds to allow students to go. In reality though, I think there are probably students who are not entirely forthcoming about their financial situation, so we probably miss some students despite the efforts of teachers and everybody to look out for, which you might not be able to afford. I think it would be unrealistic to expect us to catch every situation.
Right, but we have, we have a safety net for them.
Do we do an outreach to the parents of those students that, saying if you're, you know, if, if, if this is too much of a reach?
Our school social worker looks at the list and goes around it, looking at students with free and reduced lunch and reaches out to those families directly.
All right. I just think that maybe families that are on free and reduced lunch that may not have an extra 550, particularly if they have other kids who are going on class trips that year, I heard that when my own kids were going to DC and perhaps like this is the second or third trip this, this year, they were not on free and reduced, so I just, the more we can reach out to parents and have a confidential way for them to, I think it's important because this is a point of contention for a lot of parents. It's such a wonderful opportunity, I don't, I don't detract them there, but.
I think when we have those parent meetings, I'm there and I state to the parents that since being here, that if there's an issue, please come find me directly at your own convenience, obviously not in front of everybody.
Do you anticipate, correct me if I'm wrong, the eighth grade trip to Washington always kind of seems like a hundred percent attendance, participation. Do we anticipate the same kind of count for this?
We're hoping.
You are, so you're hoping it's a whole.
Yeah, there's always students at the eighth grade that don't go.
Yeah, who don't go, probably a handful, but not.
It's not a hundred percent and I, and for a variety of reasons, not only economic.
Right, somebody could have, you know, lacrosse tryouts that day and they can't go, I get that, yeah.
So I, we're hoping that it's a similar number percentage-wise. And we're hoping to sort of have the experience mirror what happens at the eighth grade, because the feedback generally is pretty positive. And, and for the people who organize it, it's not an easy chore. So I commend the people who, the advisors who wanna do this.
So there's no fundraising associated with the cost?
No, there usually is, a certain amount of fundraising.
We'll offset the cost for the family.
Does the school fund this in any way?
No.
So it's also funded through the students?
Other than, other than salaries of the advisors.
Right.
The forms say the cost will be borne by the students, middle, shelter rooms. But then there is a fundraising checkoff.
Yes.
I, I would just ask that if you have fifty kids in the seventh grade, and forty-seven signed up, that you reach out to, not you, we?
We do.
Reach out to the other three instead of waiting for three to reach out?
We do that usually two months prior to the, and have a reason why. And if the parents, we usually have a meeting with them. It's usually through our NPS department.
All right, any other questions? Upcoming events, Red Ribbon Week, we already talked about that. We talked about the Natural High Speaker, the dodgeball tournament. New York State Application Week was this past week. Some good news, Ms. Motto informed me today that eighty-five percent of our seniors have filled out at least one application already. For the first time ever, we have universities and colleges that are requesting to visit us that had not in the past. So just this week, Berkeley, Brown, and Pomona requested the right to visit our school. I think that's a reflection of the fact that we sent free kids to those institutions last year, but that's good news. The sixth-grade Rube Goldberg Science Fair on the 8th of November.
This is where, this is where the students create a machine to perform a simple task. So the students are working in groups to do that, and then they will display their things on the evening.
Veterans Day, schools closed, the play, you can't take it with you, on the 16th, 17th, and 18th of November. The next conversation's with administrators on the 17th of November. Mr. Malone.
Mr. Reynoso is gone.
Mr. Reynoso.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to take us back to the elementary school, where there's a lot of amazing things happening with younger children on a much less complicated, unencumbered way. And, and I sort of thought, maybe I should start with the pictures. Let's see. Because it's quite an honor to be able to be around these kids every single day, like I am. And it's really a credit to Mr. Malone and our faculty, they're all tremendous there. There's such amazing things going on in our buildings on a day-to-day. So pumpkin picking, for example, happy kids. Project Adventure is something that will occur with the fourth and fifth grade. I had the honor of going this year to Camp Quinnipet. And the idea behind Project Adventure is really kids being put in challenging situations, and what that would look like in terms of pressure and stress and helping their peers. It was really powerful, and our school counselor, Mrs. Grant, had the opportunity to debrief with the kids after, and have really thoughtful conversations of what that looks like outside of school, as far as being there for your classmates, people who you might not normally think would step up and help you out in a situation where you're struggling or facing a challenging situation, be it at home or in the community, with teachers, with their peers. It's a full-day event. Recession time, great, smiling faces there, kindergarten and first grade, reading books, just running along the, the dirt, the dirt path, track. The dirt. Kindness is our theme this year, and you really feel it in our building, walking down the building halls, kids practicing this, and also seeing it with their teachers and people around them. It's really, it's across the board, just a universal climate in our building, and it's really quite tremendous to experience as well. Mrs. Kushner, a third-grade teacher, came up with a song of her own doing that she created along with Ms. Remkus, who I believe was like, one of the catalysts to morning program. Very, very long time ago, I don't know how long ago, but I hear a long time ago. So again, just for her to come back and share this song with the kids, and, and talk about what that would look like in your classroom and in the community as far as kindness goes. Author visit, James Hannibal had the opportunity to have a conversation with, it was, I believe, third to sixth grade, with the kids that attended, just as far as elaborating on books and ideas that goes behind writing, and where those ideas stem from. And I will go back to the beginning, which was our conference day. And our idea behind Conference Day was, again, just the idea of supporting student success, which I feel then sending them off into sixth grade, if I may say, is really preparing them for middle and high school, which I won't take credit for, because I'm new, but credit to Mr. Malone, an amazing administrator and the faculty there as well. Supporting student achievement and reinforcing student success. Fountains and panels, our benchmark assessment system, which is, again, the idea of students learning how to elaborate on what they're reading, and being thoughtful in sharing the things that they're learning in those texts, and it's starting as early as kindergarten. So rather than the generic standardized test, standardized test of maybe multiple choice, it's really getting them to think about what they're reading and speak to what they're actually reading. And it's starting early on, so the teachers are really sharing how they're seeing that being incorporated with the older grades, and how they really are learning from this program that's been implemented in our school. Crisis Prevention Intervention Training is the idea of supporting students who have mainstreamed into regular classes. So it's really teaching teachers and teacher-assistance skills on how to best acclimate those kids in the classroom, and form friendships, and socialize, and things along those lines. This is a training that occurred during Conference Day, but will resume again on Wednesday with the part two of that training. Accommodations and modifications for students with disabilities. Diane Whipple is a special education teacher who is invited in to work with special area teachers, and again, teaching them tools regarding working with this population, and really getting them acclimated and feeling comfortable in their environment in regular classes. Our own Ted Carr, from our technology department, offered Google Drive training and Chrome training for teacher's assistants, which was at the request of the teacher's assistants as well, so that's something that was provided. See, there's a lot going on. Kindness counts, kindness quilt, we've had a bunch of safety presentations, fire drills, lockdown drills, fire safety in the home, bus safety. Again, I spoke about Project Adventure. Mr. Malone read a book to the entire student body called The Three Questions, and it's really the idea of pondering what it would look like to help others on all different levels. Partners in Print is something that is going to start for four consecutive Thursdays, starting this Thursday. Upcoming events, E F is students visiting the firehouse and learning safety drills there in the firehouse. A Halloween parade. Veterans Day recognition is something that's gone on for a long time, but the highlight from this is the caps-to-benches program. So Nina Landy, kindergarten teacher, who was the catalyst for collecting caps in our school, will share with the veterans that we've collected enough caps to also present a chair in honor of veterans that will be then placed, housed in our building, on top of the one that's being sent to a school in Michigan. Early dismissal, parent-teacher conferences will take place, and the evening parent-teacher conference is on the 20th. And the pictures, once again, for good measure. Any questions? Yes?
What time is the parade on Halloween?
The parade is at 1:15, uh, 2 o'clock, excuse me, 2 o'clock, it will begin on Main Street.
Okay.
Yes. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Our athletic update is, we're winding down our fall season. As Mr. Nichols alluded to, we had our Homecoming Weekend, which was, it was a tremendous success for the students, despite the soggy Saturday. Friday night, we had beautiful weather, and I remember looking across the field and just seeing what looked to be like a thousand people. So I'm hoping that we can recreate that next year. We definitely have to, a huge thank you to not only the PTSA, but all the families that have hosted the events throughout Homecoming Weekend. The facility staff, they were amazing, the administrative staff, and obviously, the class advisors did a nice job on that. We are, this seems to be like, kind of the year, the time of year where I do a lot of celebrating. We had our Senior Day for volleyball, girls soccer, boys soccer, and field hockey. We're going into our postseason now, and as we move into our postseason, as of 3 o'clock today, we've won a league championship in golf, as well as today, we won the league tournament, which is something that I don't think we've won in quite some time. We also won a league championship in swimming, we share swimming with East Hampton, and we won our league championship in boys soccer. We have many teams entering the playoffs, I'll just give you some photos from Senior Day. That was field hockey Senior Day, where we had the seniors run out underneath a procession of the seventh and eighth-grade field hockey players. Mrs. Graves was the de facto photographer for that event, thank you, Mrs. Graves. We had a ribbon-cutting ceremony, which I, I thought was very nicely, that we had our two, our two soccer teams represented out there, and the athletes got to cut the ribbon. Anything with an umbrella in it was probably on Saturday from Homecoming.
Here's an umbrella, thank you.
Yep.
You see that car, they were doing an advertising for the bank.
And then, now, what you see here is, you see some of the floats, I know the pictures are a little small. The parade down Main Street, which culminated with the skits, which were very nicely done. There's Mrs. Graves' car with the top down and the pouring rain, as the other cars were. Again, more floats, our Homecoming Court, I believe this is the seniors, am I correct?
Yeah.
They did a rendition of Harry Potter. And some more Homecoming photos. We have many upcoming postseason events. To highlight them all would be, would be rather time-consuming. But I, we have a volleyball playoff match, which is tentatively scheduled for next Wednesday. I think we'll be playing Mercy, who just happens to be the team we're playing tomorrow. And then we have some other events there. Out of all those, the two that we'll be hosting will be the volleyball match and the boys soccer playoff game, which will be out here on Wednesday at 3 o'clock. Prior to that, the junior class will be treated to a pizza party for winning the lip sync during Homecoming. And that might be Conventor's last pizza party, so they'll have it downstairs. Again, more upcoming events, I'm gonna have a, we're gonna have a very busy next couple weeks as we enter the state championships. And I'm putting that date out there right now, so you can mark your calendars. The 26th was gonna be Spirit Night, that's our next big all-district event in terms of athletics. Tonight, I proudly show you what was and what is. And I think the community needs to be commended on the creation of this soccer field. It is plush, it is playable, and we'll be playing on it Wednesday. And this is some pictures of the students using the field at recess and lunchtime. And Mr. Fisher, any questions for athletics?
The, the kids just had such a wonderful time in Homecoming, so good for you, thank you.
Well, I'd like to thank everybody that was involved. It truly takes the community, it was an awesome event, and I slept very well on Sunday. Wow, not going on this dish. I will keep this very brief, I promise you that, okay? I just want to touch on the fact that, as was already pointed out, tech department helps out behind the scenes whenever we can. Been pretty busy lately with lots of activities going on here, in particular, on Super Ten's Conference Day. Aside from the AV setup we did, as was mentioned, had worked with the teacher's assistants and some other folks to give them some training on technology, Google and things like that. And of course, for all the other events that are taking place, from the gym for the pep rally, to Outback Friday evening, and of course, Saturday evening in the rain, the tech staff is there to support in any way we can, so we're here to help. They told you I'd be brief. Scott, I apologize, I forgot to mention the tech staff, they did an amazing job, once again.
There was a little mud in one of the microphones tonight, so I just wanted to let you know. One of these ones could hit the ground on Saturday. We'll work on it.
Is that the last of them?
Yep, we're done. So we're gonna busy.
At this point, let's move into the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items one through five?
Sub moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda?
I have a question. It look, it, it seems like we're taking a long time to approve meetings these days, Sundays are two months old. Is there a reason why we have to spend a lot of time?
It's simply the amount of things on my plate, and we've come up with a new protocol to help me get this approved faster.
All right.
It's all on me. Any other discussion?
I'm sorry, by the way, it broke, sounds like you're losing your voice.
I'm not, well. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Can I get a motion to approve special education items six through nine?
Sub moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Can I get a motion to approve business items 10 through 20?
Sub moved.
Thank you, any discussion?
I guess I'm just still a little confused about 17.
Any question?
The contracts, is it not gonna be going into force until at least another 30 days? Was there any way, you guys might have talked about this before, and I apologize, something repetitive, but have we ever talked about, because it doesn't seem like there is a specific, like, anti-drug aspect to it, aside from the fact that it is just about culminating relationships, and there's no specific activities? I mean, is there a way that we, we do it in-house, we get it done quicker, I don't?
No, because we'd still have to hire and have the award approved. And then we, the concern is that we, we, we are, it's so closely aligned to our, we have, we have, we have unions, and so would we have to pay them at our union rate? So this was, this was a way to do it economically, with somebody we've already partnered with in the past, who does provide this service. So, not that I have anything against our, against our unions.
I, I understand, I just, I think they probably will hire locally.
They also have staffers in this building that will probably be more than happy to extend their school day and, and work with our students as well. So they'll have, they have people, two of their people have worked regularly with our students, and they have people that work at Shelter Island who know our students as well. So they're, they're, they're pretty much, pretty much a fixture here in Psych Harbor. So it was, it was, it was, it was a logical move.
You're gonna see by osmosis, January, that the relationships that are already established, like, kids hug Kim Laubie. And so there'll be a tremendous benefit that you can't describe right now from that synergy, once it gets up and going.
But she won't be the one in the room, maybe two people we don't know.
But I can guarantee that.
She'll be around.
She'll be around.
Right.
Any other discussion? I, I just had a question about 20, we discussed the phone athletic trip, but we didn't really discuss the Australian Outback. And that one obviously has a very hefty price tag, and just, is it the same, you know? Yeah, I mean, just that issue in terms of, you know, so how do we help kids who can't afford that to go? And then how does that work, I assume that's pretty prohibitive?
Right. I've, I've never seen a school trip that's that expensive.
That's extremely expensive.
So the, so a couple of things that are important to.
So, a couple of things that are important to note. Number one, there's a significant difference between the seventh grade trip, the eighth grade trip, and trips to Hawaii, or Italy, or Spain, or Costa Rica, or Australia. Those are optional trips, and the cost is borne entirely by those families that elect to send their students. Usually that number's pretty small. We have had trips, to speak to Chris's point, that have totaled in and around $5,000 to Italy. And those trip costs have been offset by fundraising and donations from the Ruud Heschan Trust. You know, what's before you is a proposal. If you guys determine a support of education that it's too expensive an option for the students, it is what it is. But this is what this, this teacher wanted to present this opportunity to the students, and that's what's before you.
Is this the only trip available to students in the high school this year? Because some years we have two tri, I remember, was it last year or the year before? There was Cuba and Hawaii, it was two years ago. And then one was a little less expensive than the other. I think Hawaii was like $3,600 or something. So is this the only thing that's available this year?
I don't know that, I'd have to go back and look.
All right.
The proposal just came forward.
No, I appreciate that, and you know, who doesn't want to go to Australia, right? But I'm only asking, because even between like $3,600 and $5,500, that's a huge difference. And we may have had ones that have been like $5,000. I just don't ever remember seeing one this high. And this is an extravagant for, I mean, a very extravagant cost for one student to take a trip for 10 days or a week. So I'm really nervous.
I believe we approved, don't quote me, but I thought we approved a February one already in a prior board meeting, like a European one.
Did we?
I think we did. Jordan, this is.
This year or last year?
No, it's for 2018's February break. I thought, I thought we did.
And does this trip go during the break also?
Yes.
Is that how it works?
Yes, it's the February break.
Then I would assume they're gonna miss a couple of days beforehand, like some of the trips do, just so that, and this is further distance.
No, the two days are allowed to be missed.
Two, the board policy says they're allowed to miss two days.
Two days, yep.
This trip proposes that they miss two and a half days.
But this is about as far as we've ever gone on this class trip, right?
Yes.
And so, and then, so I guess my only two questions are, so is the district's cost in this, how does that work with the staff that go? I mean, because technically that would normally be their vacation if it's teachers, right?
Usually, there's no, the way trips overseas or over vacations work is, we don't pay the teachers at all with district funds. Their incentive to go is usually twofold. One, they wanna go with the kids and show them the experience. But two, dependent upon how many people they sign up, they either go for free, or they're gonna reduce cost. And it's a, it's usually a ratio formula. For every nine students, I'm just pulling this out, you know, one chaperone goes for free, that kind of thing.
So we don't pay, there's no additional employee, like, they're not paid per day, per DM or anything?
No.
I'm just curious about how it works.
On the school trips, yes.
Right, I get that.
So on the school trips to Boston and to Philadelphia.
Right, that makes sense, okay.
This is like optional.
Yeah.
This is an optional.
And then is there any opportunity then for a child who could never afford this, and I would think we would have a few of those, to also somehow get into a trip like this? How would they do that?
Pretty hard to do that. We can make appeals to student council, but the commitment, since it's extra versus when compared to a class trip, the commitment's not the same.
Okay, I was just curious.
And then how do you determine who gets to go? Because it's 20 to 30 students, between grades ninth through 12. Is there like a seniority, if there's a big high demand for it?
We've only run into that with the Hawaii trip. There was some talk about it, but that it might happen, but it did not happen. So we've never had a trip that was oversubscribed. Usually what happens is, if a trip, for instance, has three chaperones, and there are a certain number of kids, and more kids wanna go, they'll just get another chaperone to go, and take more students.
Can I answer your question? July 5th, there was a trip that was approved to Costa Rica, and the cost was $3,600 per student.
Victoria, what were the dates, the same?
No, actually, it was April, I'm sorry, March 28th to April 6th, 2018.
And just some background on that real quickly. There have been requests in the past from certain trip advisors to only allocate one trip per vacation. And as the principal, I've decided against that, because I think it should be the choice of students and families. If there are multiple options, they should be able to choose.
So I just wanna say, you know, I'm not raising a question in any way, shape, or form to discourage these kinds of opportunities, because I think in this day and age, that is all about what our education should be doing, and we should be encouraging as much travel as possible. I just was concerned, I wanted to understand some of the details of it, how it operated. And then also, obviously, I'm concerned about when we approve something that's got such a large price tag. You know, we're sitting here basically admitting that we've got a lot of kids that aren't gonna be able to do that, and that is, I think, difficult to do. I'm just.
Go ahead. And that does happen every year. I mean, you know, I've had kids go through this personally, where their friends could not afford it and did not. And it's hard.
Yeah.
Because you have the haves and have nots. And this does, you know, it's a wonderful experience, but it does reinforce that amongst peers that can't afford to go.
You know, I wonder that just, since we're on this topic.
This is extracurricular.
No, I understand, hang on, I understand. It's still an opportunity.
We are in the middle of an agenda, I'd like to follow Robert's rules. Susan, if you wanna wrap up your comments, and then I think Stephanie wanted to say something, and then we'll just make sure that everybody has a chance to speak their word, and then we'll both.
Okay, so I absolutely will wrap up, just since we're on the topic of the trips, that I wonder if we might look at some practices where over the course of the four years in high school, we monitor, and if the kid is not getting to go on any trips, that maybe as a community, we can fundraise so that even kids who couldn't afford something like this, that we make sure that they at least get one opportunity. That was basically my only point. I just hope we can find ways to make these kinds of opportunities available to everybody. Even if it's not every year, like, even once in their high school term, that would be amazing. Does anyone wanna weigh in, Stephanie?
No.
No, I am, okay.
Hang on, I know you had a couple of opportunities. Did you wanna weigh in, or Alex, before?
I just wanted to say, I think there's a difference between extracurricular versus co-curricular. Is that correct?
Yes.
And the co-curricular ones are the ones we make sure, where this is just extracurricular, and, I mean, $5,500 is a lot of money, but to go to Australia, I can't go to Australia for $5,500. So, the thing?
I guess, I'm sorry, Diana, I believe also that the reason I asked Brittany about no child left behind on a seventh grade Philadelphia trip, or an eighth grade trip, those are all-inclusive class trips. But these are designed in ways to, the folks that are going to Costa Rica are probably in an Ivy Spanish class. I'm not being selective. So if there's 80 kids in a grade, or 300 kids in a high school, maybe only 36 children are going on these trips. So it's unrealistic to think that they would all, at those price tags, go, because they do kinda tend to go with class curriculum. It's not, we're not leaving two behind, to feel bad.
Alex, did you wanna weigh in?
No, I mean, well, I suppose so. I think everyone has made good comments, but I think these trips will kind of, they'll be successful or not, based in part on how many people can go. And I think if, and I also think that $5,500 is a lot of money, but for a trip to Australia, I would think the airfare alone would be close to that. So it's probably, if you're going to go to Australia, that sounds to me like a good price. But I think if it's too expensive, not a lot of people are gonna go. And then next year, I would assume that would be a factor in considering it. So I don't, I think, I don't see a reason to not approve it. It sounds like we're not paying for this, right? The students are gonna pay for the trip themselves.
Alex, come on?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a wonderful opportunity. All of our school trips have been, they had terrific ones. I was simply making a commentary that I witnessed parents and kids come to the informational meeting, and then I've had those kids in my kitchen crying because they can't afford to go. So I just want us to acknowledge that there is an impact. We almost always have enough kids to go. You always can have 20 or 30 kids that can afford it. It's not always curriculum-driven. The one to Hawaii, you had the wide spectrum of kids and what they were interested in. I wish I could have gone to Hawaii in high school. I just, but I just want it for the record, because trust me, when this gets out, there's gonna be parents who are gonna be heartbroken that they can't afford it for this for their kids. So just for the record.
Any other discussion on the items on the floor?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion's carried. There is a correction on Personnel Action number 25. It is correct on the top part of the agenda, but as you read into the actual resolution, there was just a typo. The position is the Monitor, and so 25 in the actual resolution needs to be amended to read Monitor and not Driver. So can I get a motion to approve Personnel Actions 21 through 41 as corrected?
Diana, sorry.
Yes.
Pull out 37, please.
Yep.
24.
You also pull out 26, please.
24, 21, 26. Any others that?
Someone said 27.
37. The ones I have so far are 21, 24, 26, and 37. Any others to pull out, second? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve Personnel Action number 21?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Can, since this is a new position in the district, can you please articulate what this position is?
Go ahead.
Sure. We, when I first started here four years ago, we had a facilities, Director of Facilities. And shortly after I came, we removed that person. And we, Jennifer and I actually carried that position ourselves for about six months. And then we combined the position when we hired Eric Grammoff, and made him as both the Athletic Director and Facilities. And with the field, my concern is that it's going to take a tremendous amount of care and maintenance to make sure that the field looks just like it does 10 years from now. That is, and then we also have a tremendous amount of construction going on. And myself and Jennifer are the ones that drive those construction meetings. So for example, today, we had, our architects were here with the folks that are gonna be installing the windows. It's great that, you know, that boots on the ground, but we really need someone driving all of the construction projects we have, including Stellamaris, including the construction projects that are gonna be happening at the elementary. Those eventually will go away, but the maintenance and the care, once you've made that kind of investment in our facilities, you need someone that has the expertise to continue moving that along. So I really believe very strongly, and I've shared this with the board, and playing to someone's strengths. By moving Eric into being full-time Athletic Director, along with teaching two of our vital classes at the elementary school, is playing to his absolute strengths. But we really need a full-time facilities, and that's gonna be our crew leader that will work, I was hoping it was gonna be with Jennifer, and myself, moving forward. And as we're losing Jennifer, I need a crew leader even more to lead our maintenance and custodial staff, our Browns crew, so that we keep that field that we've invested so much in as beautiful now as it will be 10 years from now. And the work we do at the elementary will continue and maintain, moving forward. Oh yeah, and when we came here, our building's condition survey was just, was so long and so lengthy. And we've reduced that by about a third, I would say, Jennifer, but that, we have to continue moving along with that. And that really has to move off my plate and off Jennifer's plate, and onto someone else's plate that can work that in a very fiscally responsible way. So we're using our staff, doing it in a very economical way. So this is an investment in our district.
And the resolution doesn't have the amount of, I thought usually when we have a resolution for a new position, not the individual position, don't we, do we include that or no?
No.
Creation of a position.
At the previous meeting, I thought that we had discussed that if we created a new position, we would try not to appoint that position, the same meeting, because we wanted to give the community an opportunity to know that it's.
Well, we had, we, I went through at the start of the school year, all the discussion about this position.
Okay, so you've got, so it's all the same as in D.
We vetted it and it was discussed at length.
Great, at length.
At length.
Any other discussion around item 21? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it's carried. Can I get a motion to approve Personnel Actions 22 and 23?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? My motion's carried. Can I get a motion to approve Personnel Action number 24?
No.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Do you wanna go first?
Yeah, I would like the board to not accept this. I would like them to do, if they have to do it, with regret, because I think that we've had one of the most talented school business administrators working with us for the last three years. The difference that she has made in this school district over the last three years with her, her work ethic, her professionalism, and, you know, I sent out a note to our entire community, the work that Jennifer has done, doing the sharing that she's done of services, the work that she's done getting school districts to carpool. You know, the whole idea that if a bus is going in the same direction, that we can put students on board and bring in a half million dollars to the district by doing that, is just extraordinary to me. The work that she's done, I'm sure that if Tommy John were here, she brought, she worked one of only two school districts in Suffolk County that are doing the municipal sharing of services. She had, she hired a company to come in and look, the first year we're here, through our fuel bills and our electric bills, to see if there was any inconsistencies, which she probably could tell us the amount, that that saved us. Who would think to do that?
With interest advertised.
Thirty thousand dollars, at least.
Yeah. So just, just a tremendous professional, and every move she's made has only been to benefit the school district. And we meet Monday through Friday at about seven o'clock at night to just see how our day went and what tomorrow we bring. So I will miss you so much.
I will miss you.
Merrick is a very, very lucky district. And they have no committees? No committees?
No committees. I hear they have an egg timer on their board meetings, so. After 45 minutes. Okay, so I have to say something, because coming from the business world and walking into a Board of Education, and the education that I've had, I can only appreciate you even more, because you are spot on. And I am sure that you have ruffled some feathers along the way, because you know, at the end of the day, you are going, just like I have. You're going to know how that budget's come together, where every baseball's coming from, how you're gonna get things in that vending machine, and just get it done. And in my two and a half years here, I have seen you tear charts apart, build charts back up, save this district money, go back and do it again, walk balancing 50 million volumes of financial notebooks to give out to the Board of Ed, and always have a right answer on a number. And so, sad to see you go, but thank you so much for everything that you did here for this district for two and a half years. And you can still come to the Greek Festival, I will buy you domas.
Oh, that's wonderful. Thank you so much, I appreciate everything.
Any other discussion?
I've only overlapped with you for a brief period of time, but I'm very sorry to see you go. I think it's a big loss to the district, and I think we, as a board, need to think about what we can do going forward to attract more people like this, to these kinds of positions, and to keep them in those positions.
Thank you. I will miss all of you. This is very bittersweet for me.
Are we a new community?
Excuse me?
But we're a new community?
Um, it's the same time.
It is.
It's an hour.
Does it have to be opposite direction?
It's, yep, I'm imagining this because of the canoe. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that as a mathematician and a bookkeeper, I find you inspiring, and completely, I'm amazed at the fact that not only do you have relentless attention to detail, but you also have a strong vision for the big picture. And having that balance, it's rare, and it's gonna be very difficult for us to fill your shoes.
Thank you so much. This is being taped, right?
Is that gonna be your new ring phone?
I will be downloading this.
Show it to your mom and dad.
Exactly.
Any other discussion on the floor?
Yeah, no one mentioned it through all of it, she's always smiling. Maybe that's not PC to say anymore, but I don't care, I think it's wonderful, I'm a non-math person, and I think you're great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can we get it through if we all vote no?
I don't think that we can force her.
All those in favor?
Regrets.
Regrets.
Yes.
All those opposed? Can I get a motion to... Number 25, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Can I get a motion to approve Personnel Action number 26?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I, I just want to make, this has, I think it's very important, but this little bit of discussion has nothing to do with the individual whatsoever. You know, as you just walked us through the thinking behind why we now have a new school facility, I like to say school facilities, maintenance crew leader, because otherwise it means something different to me, but anyway, I'm just concerned about the way this new position is being structured with part-time teacher and part-time athletics, and I know it's come up before and we've discussed it, where it has, and I just, I don't understand the way it's being structured in terms of the contract and salary because of the, of the unevenness of the two pieces, and it just seems to me that the Athletic Director position just encompasses more than is being reflected in the balance of the pay between the two jobs. So that if the individual then says, oh, no, I'm only going to stay and do these two classes, but I'm going to drop the other piece, they still maintain a very, it's just, to me, an imbalanced salary, of part of which would be covering that Athletic Director side. So that, that's just what concerns me here, and that's, I, I just, I know, we talked about it, I, I'm trying to understand it, I just still don't understand it, so that's why I wanted it pulled out, because I, I'm going to vote no for that reason only, having nothing to do, this has nothing to do with the individual, this has to do with the structure that it's being done. Again, not, I don't have no problems with pairing the two things, it's just the way the contract and the pay is being needed out balanced, that's, that's my concern.
Any other discussion on the floor?
You know what, can we be reminded why the pay wouldn't be six tenths for the Athletic Director and four tenths for the Teacher position, because that's how the work's divided in the MOA? So why wouldn't the compensation be structured that way?
I'm sorry, didn't we get an answer to that today?
No. We never got it, when we came up last time, we didn't get a direct answer on that.
I, I did it last time, if you want to, I'll take it if you want to, or I'll take it.
So, we'll both try, because I am a math person, is the, this is a very, very common model through, for smaller schools, because supporting a full-time Athletic Director for smaller schools is, is a challenge. So, most schools under 1,000 students have a Teacher slash Athletic Director. So if you can imagine that 40% of the day is spent teaching, and then the other 60% of the day is spent geared towards Athletic Directing, and that, if you look at all of that was presented today, it is that scheduling of buses, it's scheduling of games, it's scheduling of athletics, it's, it's, it's a myriad of so many different things that have to get accomplished in a day, so that's the other 60% of the day. And if you look at the stipend, that's all the things that happen in the evenings. So, I don't think I missed any homecoming events, but if you were to put a dollar amount by, at the hour, that person's now losing money, because you, you are at every Athletic event, so you take a homecoming event, you take the Spirit Week event, those, those, there's something going on every single night, that you could be at games every single night. So you have to be observing, we have like 50-plus sports that we already share at, share at sports with, that we have our own sports for, and that we're going into now extended playoff seasons. All of those things require the presence of an Athletic Director.
Right, and I, I, that's not what I'm questioning, it's, it is literally that I recognize that that job is a big job, that I don't think the balance of the pay, and you just said it's 40/60, but that's not with the contract, the contract's reflecting like 80 whatever to 18.
Sure.
And so that's why, and I know you've explained it to me before, I just, I'm sorry, it doesn't make sense to me, and so if he walks, if whoever's in that job then walks, and then we're left with only $18,000 for Athletic Director position, that you cannot fill some, you cannot fill that position with that. That's what doesn't make sense to me. That is a more valued position, so...
We, we don't understand the question, we'll, we'll try again to answer it. The, the way that it's structured now is that for this particular configuration, the teacher's salary takes, compensates for the seven hours and one minute of a contractual teacher day. If there is a reconfiguration and this person decides not to do that same job, then this MOA is null and void. And so there wouldn't be the 18, only $18,000 just for the full position, because it wouldn't be the full step in lane for the seven hour and one minute day, it would be the per, the point four, whatever it is, as per the tax negotiation.
The person would become a teacher.
So why doesn't the MOA reflect that balance? That's what I don't understand.
I'm sorry, Susan, that response from our attorneys this afternoon does outline that.
It doesn't, it doesn't. It, it says that, that we, that if they walk away from one part of it, this becomes null and void, but it doesn't answer is, if 60% is Athletic Director and 40% is teaching, why isn't 60% of the constant, of compensation in the MOA for that and 40% for teaching? That's, I think that's your question?
That would make sense.
That I have not heard answered at the board meeting.
So, if the person has been hired as a teacher, if they decide to stop being Athletic Director, they would, they would become a full-time teacher. They would become a full-time teacher.
And they would need to take on more classes, so does that salary stay the same?
Yes, they would then stay in that lane, they would be a full-time teacher.
Right, but we also have two other...
The people, the people below them would, would...
Be accessed?
Would be accessed. They would have priority. Right. I don't think he's, I don't think anybody's planning to do that, but that's, that's where they would, they would be appointed as a teacher.
Right.
Concerned about structure?
Any other discussion?
I have a specific question. I didn't see any redlining, can you just plug into the amendment?
I agree. The specifics aren't, it's just listed on the number...
No, but it's amended, but what we got sent wasn't redlined, we didn't know what was...
I don't know what the amendment...
It's for the...
It's, he has to be used to both paths and to...
Both unions.
Both units.
Any other discussion?
Could you just share with everybody what the two classes are that are being taught by this position? You said they're both elementary, because at the previous board meeting, one of them, it was one in elementary and one in Pierce's, so I'm confused.
And there was, there was a much greater need in the elementary, I, I, I will send that to you undercover, because I, I don't want to talk about special education, but we can, we can send that to you.
Are there two regular gym classes that are being taught by the, by this position?
Was it wrong, you want to draw an answer?
Is it...
Physical education classes.
Two physical education classes.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motions carried. Can I get a motion to approve Agenda Items 27 through 36?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. Is Marcus...
Yes, yes.
He is. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Don't bet us yet.
Waiting to be pouring out all the work you have to do. You're going to have a long glimpse of it there.
I'm looking forward to this, all right. This was amazing, I mean, your presentations were wonderful. It'd be really great work with all of you, I'm looking forward to it, thank you.
Well, thank you, there's things you get to present on, yes. Thank you, Marcus.
Welcome. Can I get a motion to approve Personnel Action number 37?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I just have to pull it out because I want it abstained.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstain?
Abstained.
Thank you for letting me know. Can I get a motion to approve Personnel Actions 38 through 41?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Your motion carries. We do have an addendum to the agenda, Personnel Action 42 should be on your desk.
Or did it just come on, was it today?
Today. Can I get a motion to approve Personnel Action number 42? Second? Any discussion?
Thanks. We need a little excitement.
So, was this a position that was asked about earlier, that had been a, hadn't been a full-time position? Or it was, it was...
It is a full-time position.
Okay.
Position, it has existed since 2015.
Right.
The person filling that position, though, was actually on a provisional appointment. He wasn't a permanent appointment through civil service.
Oh, God.
He had to actually take a test and get on the list, and he was, he scored a perfect score on the list. So we had to make him permanent now, and we were under a time restraint, so that's why we had to, we ended up adding him on last night. But this was no, not a new position, we've always had this position.
Same position, same person, just, this just has to do with the legal...
Just making permanent.
Thanks a lot.
Any other discussions?
I'd like to see how the next business manager's going to answer that. Go ahead. No, no way.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. Any new business?
Alright, we do have an item for discussion, this was sent to the board some time ago. I had received an email from our district clerk asking if we wanted to renew our membership to Nassau Suffolk School Board Association. And I shot it out to the board, and I got a couple of responses, one was that we put it on an agenda for discretion, and the other one was from Tommy John, who couldn't be here tonight, so I'll just read his comments. Oh, thank you. January will read his comments, and then we'll open the floor for discussion.
The Nassau Suffolk School Board Association is a lobbying group that represents school districts from Long Island upstate capital. It is the NISBA equivalent for Long Island schools. The geopolitical breakdown in New York State politics in, this between Long Island, upstate, and New York City, and these areas vie for aid and other consideration in Albany. It is at the state level where education law is created and regulations imposed. The association opposes charter schools, fights to restore funding, foundation aid, opposes unfunded mandates, and supports our BOSI's programs, to name just a few important issues. In short, they support public education on all issues. We have been a part of the Nassau Suffolk Board of Association in years, in past years, and matured. Two years ago, the district decided to rejoin the association to increase our voice in Albany. I believe that it is important for schools on Long Island to work together for our common interests at the governmental level where it counts the most. For these reasons, I urge us to remain part of this association. Sincerely, Tommy John Chivoni.
Any other discussion on the floor?
What's the cost of being a...
$2,900.
How many other Long Island school districts are part of this? That I don't know. Are there, how about East End? Katie, do you know how many in East End is part of it? Is this commonplace for the area that we're in?
I don't think so, right?
Yeah.
And Katie, do you found them, how, they supported you directly at all? I mean, I know I see all the stuff in NISBA all the time, I just never see anything that is...
They're a very active, they're a very active group. Suffolk County's very active, Nassau County's very active. There, there's a lot of political terrain ahead of us, there's no doubt about it.
Is it, is Tommy John's been the one who's been liaising with them?
He's been our, he's been our legislative liaison.
Right, no, I know, so has he been dealing with them directly?
I don't know that, I don't know.
And this really isn't, you know, legislative would be more government, this is an organization who lobbies on our behalf, basically. It's basically kind of a lobbying organization for public education in Nassau Suffolk County. Do you know if they have anything, I don't recall this, so I apologize if something's come across our email, do they do anything locally to support school boards, like have, you know, meetings where you can meet with other school boards out here, or are they a facilitator of kind of local dialogue that we can tap into?
I can find out, I can get back to you.
I mean, theoretically, it sounds like it's an important thing to be a part of, but I just, I've never kind of understood beyond being a lobbying group, what else they bring to us, because you could have a pod with to see great dialogue across districts with the organization, I just, that I've just never heard of.
They will, once you join, you would be added to the list, and you'd get all of the local information, like for myself, I'm part of the New York State Association of School Business Officials, but then I also take part in the Suffolk County Association of School Business Officials, because Suffolk County focuses on create laws and changes and advocacy for just Long Island school districts and Suffolk County school districts. So this is the same idea, you would still be part of NISBA and get all of the state information, but Nassau Suffolk now will provide you with more local information and more local advocacy, and that's why a lot of school districts are part of the organization, and they also do a lot of surveys, and they also do provide throughout the year information that you would not be privy to if, if you didn't join.
No, I mean, I, I, I get NISBA stuff, I just don't, I'm asking them, because I don't know what a catalyst they are, kind of helpful dialogue locally, so, and maybe that, maybe that's just not their purpose.
I'll just check their website.
Yeah.
I'm looking for it.
Do you have a condition?
Oh, I, the more dialed in right now, we're, we're facing so many adversaries externally, that the more dialed in you can be, the better. We are very isolated out here, that's why we're part of the rural schools group as well, because we're very isolated here on the East End, the more partnerships we can make, right now, we're kind of in line for attack, you know, Bill Gates hasn't helped us either, he's now been infusing more money into privatizing schools. Every one of those things is lining up, you know, we're very fortunate, we don't have a private school close to here, but these, these are really, we're, we're in direct attack as public schools right now. So it's not just the tax cap, it's all these external attacks on schools, so the more you can leverage that lobbying, and one of the things we don't do, that in my former district, we would do, is we would meet with other school boards and kind of align with them, so...
I mean, I think there's an opportunity that it'll be a tap.
I'm, I'm part of the East End cluster, we, we get together superintendents and we share, you know, and that's where we've come up, a lot of the sharing that we've done is, is just those relationship building, and that's going to be the next step for school boards to get together and say, you know, face to face, how can we make these, these, these sources of revenue building happen? And it's going to be school board to school board.
I'm not opposed to any of the idea, I mean, it makes complete sense, the only thing that I just don't understand, and I would love to see more information before we would approve it, is just that, much as we were not a member and then we were for the last two years, right, we were paying these dues, and at least in my year on the board, I never saw anything from them or heard anything about them. So that's why I just was curious if they'd support, provide any support to you, and I was curious as to what, as liaison, I know Tommy John's not here right now, you know, what had been done, because if we're paying that, I would just, you know, it all makes sense.
Yeah.
But I would just like to know that we're not just paying it and, and we're not getting anything for it, is all I'm saying. So I'd love to know a little bit more.
So do you need more time to read up on it?
Yeah, well, no, I would just, I just want to know, so the answer to this question, in case, and she wasn't sure, she had, you mentioned other organizations, and we don't know from Tommy John whether he was getting direct support from them, that's all, I just...
Do they send emails out, you know, per, per Jennifer's comments about the organization, she's part of it, she gets additional emails that are more regional in nature, are we getting emails, or they're just going to one person, or are there those...
I'm not getting any emails from them.
You're not?
Yeah, neither am I.
No.
Yeah, so it could just be a lobbying group, not just, but that could be their sole purpose.
Is there a deadline now to make a decision?
Uh, no, it's just a...
Uh, no, it's just a dues, uh, an invoice had came and she wanted to know if we should pay it.
Oh, I think those are good questions, it just sounds like Tommy John has the most information about it and he's not here, why don't we just put it on for when he's here?
Yeah, it'll be the next, maybe the next meeting.
Okay.
And if we can look in the, in between then and then, if we can find out, you know, did they do anything for us, or is it just purely that, okay, but I just want to know, you know, I, I just think we need to be watching the tax dollars wherever we can, and nobody had heard of them when the, the bill came in, so...
So, um, what I'm hearing is that, um, there might be some sentiment to add this to a future agenda, um, is there any objection to bringing this up for discussion at another time?
I think the next meeting.
So, I would encourage my fellow board members, um, to do a little bit of their own research and homework, simply because this is a school board association, um, so our administrators have their own associations, this is our association, so I'd encourage you to, um, um, seek the information that you desire. Unfinished business, uh, there was some questions about architects' cost breakdown, Jennifer had provided us with, um, the board had requested, um, some analysis, and that analysis was provided to the board, um, was there any discussion related to that?
I had, I had some questions about it, but, are we pulling it up on the screen to look at, there was some slides that we got, right?
There was just one big table.
No, right, but if you save it to your computer, it goes like a slide, so, the table, no, this was, it was a page...
It was a big Excel spreadsheet?
Yeah, this is the Excel spreadsheet, but if you want to go through line by line or the new presentation, um, I could be, I could basically answer some of your questions, um, but not your detailed questions about some of these items, because the architects are really the ones that helped me prepare this. So, the architects are definitely coming back on December fourth, so I think, I sent everyone the updated presentation, and I sent everyone the spreadsheet, so if anyone wants, um, has any questions, if you send it to me in advance, then I could get answers from them, and they could have a full discussion when they come back on December fourth.
My question was about the presentation, and some of the slides in the presentation, I think, had changed.
Yes.
So, I had some questions about changes, but if, if it, it, it sounds like it makes sense to wait till they're here.
Would you be willing to provide those questions to the architects in advance so that they know...
Yeah, absolutely.
And they're prepared to answer them?
Absolutely.
Great, I appreciate that, you can, um, send that to me and I'll see you.
Yeah, because it doesn't make sense to tee it up now when they're not here, and you could, you know, I think I talked to the other presentation up there and looked at the lesson.
All right. Public input, two. Anybody for public input? All right, can I get a motion, uh, to adjourn to executive session? Hang on, hang on, hang on. Find it. Can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the employment of a particular person, a contract issue, and a legal issue?